We got back from recess. The time is 9:47. We are on agenda item number three, discussion review, Grimes County FY 2022 budget. Commissioners, I'll open the discussion. Each of you have a revised, hopefully I use the right term, the revised preliminary budget that we sent. From our discussions last Wednesday, the auditors put the numbers in from the changes that were, that we had, I won't say agreed on, but numbers that we had talked about in the same lack of direction we wanted to go because the final budget has not been approved, and I understand that. I got information yesterday that once all of the numbers were in, we're about $15,600 short. So to then again present to you this morning for our discussion, a balanced budget, I went through and made some adjustments. I took 2,000 out of the IT contingency. I took 3,500 out of 424's contingency.
We took 10 out of 424, out of non-departmental's contingency.
You took 10?
I did, and we discussed that and your crew did. So what we did is took 10,000, it was 30,000, we moved it down to 20,000 from the contingency. We decreased 424 non-departmental strategic plan as well by $2,882.72.
And the reason that came up to an odd number?
To make it equal our balance. And we also, you also had said 700, approximately 750 dollars from juvenile, not juvenile, adult probation. Well, we changed it. Remember, we discussed that over the phone where, because on the email it was stating you're anticipating on the moving in June, right? So we wouldn't have rent, we would have, that would leave rent for nine months. But then I had mentioned to you that we had anticipated on being in the new Justice Center by June, and here it is, going to be October or November with our move-in date. So if we could flip that and take 10 from the contingency and non-departmental and leave more in the rent for the.
We had that discussion yesterday?
We did, and I thought about rewriting that in an email because I knew this would happen, but I didn't.
What do you mean by that?
So your response to that was, I understand the changes that need to be made.
Tell the court what my changes were.
Okay. We'll start. All right. IT contingency.
Right.
He was correct. Reduced $2,000. So that went from 10,000 to 8,000. Non-departmental strategic plan, reduced by 2,882.72.
Reduced by what?
Non-departmental contingency, reduced by 10,000. You okay?
Which is also 424.
424, 45.3.
Are these already reflected in what?
They are. Adult probation, the rent facilities, which is 4510, if I'm not mistaken, that was reduced by 7,49.98. Yes. And then we reduce the capital projects by 564.45.
I remember that.
Yes, that was in your email. I should have.
That was capital projects?
Yes.
That's where we had like 600, we had an excess of 600, we had 650,000, but we added
32.
32,000, so we just took the odd, this 564 out of that.
Yes.
Reduce it a little bit.
Yes.
Figured out we could make up that shortage somewhere.
But that's 75,000 for the general, yes ma'am.
Leaving a balance in capital projects.
That balance is 31, I believe. Let's see, I can't get you the exact number. 250, 31, 844.97. Well, but that's, there's 250 in there. The 250 was for the renovations, the 250,000 for renovations. So now that number is going to be 281,844.97. That 32 excess went down to 31. If that makes any sense. You want to count this down? 49, 412, and that's capital.
What's your page number?
4616, 45.
45.
4616.
So anyway, that's what's been done, best of my recollection.
So do you want to go over the changes that were made?
Yes, please.
That you guys agreed to?
Yes, please.
Well, discussed. All right, we moved.
Would you tell us the page number that you're on as you go through that?
I'm not on the page number, but I can, yes. Page 9. 421, 4409. It was discussed to move 17,150 from janitorial services to a part-time position for custodial. That 17,150 was broken in between the fringe and the salaries. So it wouldn't just show for the salary.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions on that, commissioners? Okay, please proceed.
Okay. I'm going to go to page, page 20. All right. Position 1304. We had increased that to 45,000, 29658. That in turn will change your line item 10, 4514110. And it will also change the corresponding load.
Or it did change.
It did. You're correct.
Which line item, 1304?
Well, it's position 1304. So that number changed, which feeds into 4110, which is salary hourly. So that number changed and the load changed.
And that changed to 45,000?
Yes, it did.
Because I think when I submitted, Jesse, when I submitted that debit, I had like 43,000 or something, did I not?
I thought it was in the 38.
The 38?
38, 39, I can pull it.
No, that's all right. 3702 or something like that. Okay. But that gets it back to where it's in line with all the others.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
Any questions on that, commissioners? It was actually 4316. Originally?
40,000, 360.
Thank you. Go ahead, Judge.
All right, 488, page 25. Okay. You're going to see a change on this. The 4884505, there's 10,000 in there, but it shouldn't be in machinery and equipment. It should be in a capital improvement line. So the total of the budget will stay the same, but you'll see the 10,000 move from this machinery and equipment line into a capital improvement.
What will that line number be?
Capital improvements is 46, let me see. I apologize.
All right.
Thought that was correct. Capital 4616.
Thank you.
Yes.
So the bottom line number for that, the court remains the same?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Just give me one second. 37, 137, which would be page... 39? It'll be page 40. The capital improvement line, reduced to 22,000 because she's anticipating on doing some demolition in September next month. So that was reduced.
Where are we at, ma'am?
Page 40.
Page 40.
Capital improvements.
4616.
What did you say about that line?
It reduced to 22,000. Mary Ann came in last Wednesday and said she expects to start this, this year, so she didn't need as much in there for next year. It was also brought up for the travel and conference. LGC 318009 says that Commissioner's Court may pay the necessary expenses of the commission. Currently, as it stands, that 4,000, the county is not, it's in the budget for them just to expend, but I need a direction from the court on whether or not the county was going to pick that up because it's not showing that right at the moment. So just didn't want to leave that lingering.
What was that government code again?
318.00.
But the 4,000 is in the current budget?
It is. It's expending their fund balance.
Okay.
As it stands right now. Okay.
Any questions on that, commissioners? Okay?
Okay. We're going to have to go back to Fund 11. So after Wednesday's meeting, went back and did a little bit of research. You will see on the bottom of page 26, it's a revenue account. There was zero at the time. I'll wait for you guys to get there. It was zero in the proposed. You'll now see that there's 4,500 after the discussion Wednesday. That's what we came across. It was, Fund 11 is a new fund, and so in the past it was being committed to miscellaneous. We have since fixed that and transferred or reclassified those receipts to Fund 11. And so with all of that, I'm anticipating it leaves 4,500. So with that increase in revenues, I did increase the expense by 4,500, which is 11, 411, 4151. It's no longer 31,500, it's 35,000.
That's on the jury pay?
Yes, it is.
On the next page, towards the top.
All right.
So like a good auditor, you find it and you take it away.
I did take it away by a custody expenses, which is what the concern was last Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jessica, Fund 11 from the new consolidated court cost for the jury?
The jury pay, off the top of my head, Vanessa, because we've been down so many of those, it is part of a court cost. I'd have to verify that it's part of the consolidation. Okay, the last one, you'll turn back to page 12.
Commissioners, was any comments or questions on that jury pay adjustment? Once again, Jesse, page 12.
Yes. Part of the salary, the hourly salary is grant funded, a portion of it. This is for the senior mills and J H R C. And so with our.
So what line are you on?
425, well, speaking of the salary, the 4110, but what changed is going to be the load. So because we increased to the 5%, we went from 3% to the 5%, we had to go in and adjust the load according to our grants for that. So we had to change everything, so that is a change that we've made in here.
I lost you. You're on page 12, what department?
425.
Okay. And 410?
Yes.
4110?
So that employee is split code between a grant fund and between Fund 10.
Got you.
So we just had to correct the load as far as what the county would be responsible for.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on that?
Does it change, it doesn't change part-time?
No, because we, the county fully funds the part-time position.
So that change is already there?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Those are all the changes? Thank you very much.
Yes.
So commissioners, those changes incorporate our discussions from last Wednesday and a little bit more after the fact in order to make it balance. As Jesse has pointed out, we adjusted some of the contingencies to cover some of the shortages and then, anyway, bottom line, we now have still a proposed balanced budget. Comments or questions, changes, additions? I'd like to thank you and the auditors' office for your job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shree, off the top of your head, what is the balance of our calendar on the approval process? Do you know that readily?
As far as, why, yes. Yes, I do. I never bring this, but today I thought, you know what, I should probably bring this. All righty.
So September 1 is our next regular scheduled meeting. Do we have any budget requirements on that date?
Yes.
And that is?
That is where we're going to vote to set the salaries, expenses, and other allowances of all elected county and precinct officers.
What date is that?
September 1st.
That's a Wednesday, that's a regular Commissioners' Court meeting.
You knew that you were going to be out of town, right?
Not until after the meeting.
What, then?
No, that's legislative update in Austin, so.
And then.
Then I'll go.
Right. And then on the 15th, we go crazy.
But nothing between the 1st and the 15th?
No.
Requirements, okay?
Unless there's a salary grievance.
Yeah.
You say we go crazy on the 15th?
Yeah.
So what happens on the 15th?
We have a public hearing for proposed tax rate. We have.
And we're only required to have the one.
Yep.
That's all we're holding.
And the public hearing on the proposed budget.
Okay.
And then during the regular meeting, so those are the public hearings, so the regular meeting, we're going to have, we're going to adopt all those things.
So commissioners, you need to mark your calendar. I think the first public hearing is going to be at 8:30?
Yes, because the, it's all going to be at 8:30 as far as public hearings. We have a couple other things that we've added to the thing. Did we not, did we add something?
To the public hearings?
That's right. The annual archive records plans for the county court and the district court.
Okay.
So it's going to start at 8:30, we'll put a photo of all on one public hearing agenda.
So that's at 8:30?
Yes.
And then the regular meeting starts at 9?
At 9, yes.
Why don't we just then start it at 8:45?
Because they've already gone, the notices have gone to the paper for 8:30.
Then we'll go ahead and do it at 8:30.
Because we're going to do them separate. We're going to have one at 8:30.
Yeah, right. We're going to do it at 8:30, 8:45, 9 o'clock. But we're just doing all, all the public hearings at 8:30.
Yes.
Okay. So commissioners, I know 8:30, might modify some of your schedules, but please be aware. So the final approval is coming on September the 15th. Everything goes according to the calendar.
Correct.
And it has to be done by law by the last day of September.
Correct.
And Judge, I did want to go back and emphasize that this budget didn't include an increase for our sheriff department.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the last time we talked, the total was about 388,596.16.
Almost 400,000 in salary adjustments and another, I think, 300,000 plus in addition to vehicles. And along with law enforcement, we have the additional DA investigator, so that salary is not included in the number that you presented, plus a vehicle for the DA's investigator. And just again, just to reiterate, this budget in front of us, the adjustments that we've made for law enforcement is a $3 an hour increase for those individuals, whether they're a starting patrol person position or they're the senior patrol position. Those that were not included in the $3 an hour adjustment is one, the sheriff, and he's been submitted at the 5%, like all of the other elected officials, 5% quota, and the three clericals, which one would be his administrative assistant, two would be the evidence clerk, and three would be the part-time librarian. So those three individuals, along with the sheriff, like the rest of the county employees, will enjoy the 5% cost of living. The law enforcement personnel are not going to get $3 an hour plus the 5% cost of living. They're getting the adjustment of that $3 an hour. So at the bottom of the pay scale, that's around a 16% to 17% increase, and at the top of the pay scale, it could be as little as 6%, but all of them would enjoy it more, I believe, I could redo the numbers, but they would enjoy more than the 5% cost of living. And we've done that. I've proposed that in the budget in an effort to stabilize that workforce to try to reduce some of the attrition that we've had over there, particularly in our beginning deputies, our jailers, and our dispatchers.
Judge.
Ma'am.
I did forget to mention one is we did add the grants in there for the block grants. And those numbers may change, but again, the revenue, whatever we budget for expenditures, the revenue would also be budgeted.
Okay, so it still balances out?
It still balances out. And then one more, back in 2016, the sheriff's department had came to court in regards to housing Washington inmates, and the court at that time had agreed that whatever revenue we receive, 50% would go back into their budget and 50% would go into the county. Do you recall that, Commissioner Walker?
Okay. They have not, for the past three years, they have not placed that money back into their budget. We have not done that. There may be a want for them to be able to add that. It would come from a, basically, we assign that fund balance, that 50%, we assign that fund balance to them for that purpose. So after I hear back from Todd, we may, they may want to go ahead and budget that money if they anticipate wanting to spending it.
Into the law enforcement?
At the jail.
Okay.
Yeah. But it would be a usage of fund balance.
Okay.
If they're assigned to fund balance.
But again, that won't change the bottom.
I just want to make sure that I have the courts agree, like, as long as you guys are aware of it and you all see no, perceive no issues with that, because we may change that if that's.
Would you have to conduct an audit similar to what you've done with the county clerk's monies?
For the Washington County monies?
Yeah.
We've done an analysis, so we pulled the research.
Okay.
And the block grants were for?
The block grants are Fund 80, the CDVG grants. They'll be on page 50 through 52, I believe. 50 through 51. And then we're also, we've been working with Harry, so those numbers may change slightly depending upon what we hear back.
That goes all the way down to, just before home maintenance here?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox, you have anything? Commissioner Mal, do you have anything?
I just want to bring up, I guess, moving up this traffic enforcement weight and measure officer back under the sheriff's department, or replaced under the sheriff's department. And when we, when it was created, I don't know for sure if the intent was to go under the sheriff's department, and there was some discommunication, that's why it didn't go under the sheriff's department. And Mr. Jarvis volunteered to allow that to go under his department. But I think since it's a countywide position that we're trying to enforce, it should be under the sheriff's department.
Did you talk with him since our last workshop?
No, I haven't had a chance to talk with him. I thought he was going to be here for this because he was aware, I think, aware of it.
I did speak to him because I told him we were having a workshop. He is home because his son is undergoing some health issues that, out of emergency. And, you know, when we created this, there was a lot of discussion. We had a lot of meetings about it. It wasn't something that Constable Blake decided that we would put him under him. We as a court decided that position would go under permission of Blake. To not speak to him about removing his employee, to me, is a little disrespectful, almost. We know that law enforcement, sheriff office, and constables work together. They all enforce the speed limits and those type of things. But we hired him as a weights and measure guy. He started the educational process of becoming that. The state shut that process down. It wasn't because he did not want to go. It was shut down because of COVID. So he has been assisting the sheriff department, he's been assisting Constable Sharper, he assists all over the county wherever we need it, including environmental, because we have a lot of stuff being dumped on our roadside. And we've seen a decrease in that because he's out on those roads. He know what roads we have problems with. So he's all over the county. Now, if it's a problem that the truck says, Constable, to, then I would suggest we remove the writing. But other than that, he still waits, we hired him as weights and measures.
I agree, but I just think it should be controlled by the sheriff because it is a countywide position.
I mean, he's being requested in those areas. Other than that, he serves his areas. But when you receive requests from both departments, constable and sheriff office to go to an area, he's just assisting. I don't understand why we need to, after four years.
Well, like you said, after four years, he's still, it wasn't certified. I don't know when they shut it down. Is it because it's a constable and not a?
No, it was deputy sheriff. I can talk to that. It was shut down at first because the people who trained, those people were sent to the border back probably in '16. They were sending the DPS officer down.
They were sending the DPS officer down there to control the Rio Grande River, and that's why it was shut down originally. I talked to Travis, not Travis, but Jimmy last week. He has received all the training that they've been given thus far, but they haven't opened up the other training yet to do the.
And Jimmy is the deputy for Constable Jarvis?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Jimmy Armadas. And as Commissioner Walker said, Jimmy assists, I wrote, bridge, with the paving, because we've had people get out there and try to tear the roads up so that we can get through with it, not only in the south end of the county, and the north end of the county also. The other issue that I have with putting this back in the Sheriff's Department, we have lost a lot of deputies over there. We currently have an opening, have, have had an opening there for a long time. Why would we move the constable there? Let's get these positions filled in the Sheriff's Department and move forward and work together, as Commissioner Walker said. I don't see we need to move this.
We anticipate, or what I've heard, is it anticipates four openings at least in the Sheriff's Department, two that have not been filled, one that's moving forward to the DPS office. So it's, there's already, already an issue with filling position. Mr. Modas has been with the county, I think, over twenty years.
Yeah.
You know, and he took that position, including a decrease in pay, to work for Constable Blake. That's something he's passionate about, is helping where he can, and he does a good job of it. We were having problems enforcing waste being dumped all around the county. We can pick up the phone, he goes to those areas, he tries to help out environmental, our environmental department, which leaves more time for the Sheriff Department to handle the things that they need to handle when they have shortage. I just believe that if I were an employee and you're discussing my position, I'm not sure if I'm going to have a job tomorrow. That makes me a little nervous on what you're trying to do. So I think it was imperative that you spoke with Constable Blake, since you're the one presenting the issue here, and to not chat with him or talk to him about the position. And it's unfortunate that he would be here today, but this is four years now that weights and measurements has been under the constable. I don't see it necessary for it to be removed, because all our law enforcement work together. We're not separate. They work together.
I understand, I understand that. I'm not saying this will be a, a position that would be vacated by anybody. This will be an additional position that will be in the Sheriff's Department.
An additional position?
This would be an additional position. It would be the same position, just moved over into the Sheriff's.
Well, it may be.
I think you mentioned that we can't fill them, but it's not filling a certain position.
You may end up filling that position, because you've got a man now that's nervous about you discussing his position, and you haven't given his administrative person the respect of talking to him to see what's been going on with the department.
It was brought up last year as well. I was hoping that we would have brief discussions of it well before we bring it up now, to kind of talk about that position. Because when we introduced the position originally, and from the information I gathered, was the sheriff did not want that position under, under him, or he did not want a designated weights and measures traffic enforcement officer. That was my understanding at the point. And then I didn't realize that that was not the case until last year. Spoke with the sheriff about it. Well, that's what I'm saying, I didn't realize, I thought that was just the way the position was handled, because the sheriff didn't want that designated weights and measures.
Which has been my point. We discussed this four years ago when we were.
And that's what I'm saying, that's what we, we understood, is that he did not want that, and that's not the case. But I spoke with him last year about.
For me, if I'm wrong, because I came in kind of on, and Commissioner, you weren't here, so.
Yes, I was here.
Oh, we're here.
I distinctly remember the conversation.
But I thought that the, I thought that the sheriff had done the initial legwork on the research.
Well, he and I both did.
Okay.
I was the one that brought it up, and I brought it up because we had lawyers tearing the roads up.
Okay.
I wanted to try to put a stop to that. And I, I talked about that in several meetings, even before you came aboard. And I went to the sheriff and talked to him. We met with Water County's officer from over there, and got some ideas. We brought it to the court, it didn't fly that time. We brought it back again, and we finally. And again, Blake Valdemino came to me at some function and said that he was interested in that program. He would like to be that officer. I said, well, let's, let's get this done and, and let's go back to the court with it. Well, that never happened. And then Blake came to me and started talking to me about it, and that's when we brought it back, and he presented it to the court, and that's when we approved it. My question to you, Commissioner Malick, is what is the problem with him doing what he's doing? Because I see constables in Razzes County and Water County working traffic control all over the place. I mean, what's the issue with that? It's just, I mean, I've getting feedback from citizens that, you know, kind of questioning what's going on with it, and I just. Yeah, I think as a countywide, the traffic enforcement, weights and measures, it just, it should fall into the Sheriff's Department.
Do we want to keep the precinct two, Commissioner, out of precinct one? Is that what we're saying?
No, that's not, that's not what we're saying. It's just a matter of, you know, and, 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 well, the feedback from the citizens, they feel it should be the Sheriff's. They don't have a problem with the position, what they're doing, just feel it, it should be a, you know, under the Sheriff's Department, because it's a countywide position.
That still is not answering my question. We have those in counties around us issuing tickets throughout the counties and those other. So what, what's the deal with, with them serving the whole county? I mean, I serve the whole county, and I think every Commissioner in here does, including, including the judge. We work for the whole county. We work for everybody.
I agree. I don't, I'm, I'm just saying what the, I'm hearing from the citizens.
Commissioner Cox, you said you had a good memory of the conversation?
I do. I'm not privy to all the research that was done prior to, to me getting here, but I do distinctly remember the conversations with the constable and the receptive, receptive environment from the court in those conversations. And I think the court sent the constable back a couple of times to obtain more information and data to support his request for that particular position. I certainly appreciate the, the idea that, of it being a countywide position, but some of the things that were important to me at the time and still are today, we'd had, I think, I don't want to draw Mr. Walker into it, but at the time, there was a couple of companies, pipeline companies tearing up the roads in precinct two and four, and we needed some help, and he came out and helped. And there's a lot of data that could go into this decision, but at the end of the day, I invite a constable from precinct two, or one, or three and four to come do their work in precinct four. If there's a need for them to do that, come on, we, we need you. We've got, Commissioner Walker and I've got three major highways going through our precinct. I don't ever recall the Sheriff Department requesting a weight and traffic person, or even a traffic person for that matter. I mean, I would be interested to see the data on the number of safety violations that each department issues. How many does the constable's office issue as opposed to how many does the Sheriff's Department issue? And going back to one of the comments, and I'm not really sure which Commissioner made it, about the vacancy, if we've had a long-term vacancy in the Sheriff's Department, I mean, there, by all means, there's no need or no reason why that particular position could not be designated through their department as a traffic officer. At the end of the day, they're all called patrol deputies. So, you know, I've done a lot of thought, and I've talked to Blake. I haven't had a, outside of the sheriff's appearance last time, he hasn't contacted me to discuss the matter, and I don't see any reason right now to, to make a change in that particular area. That's just my opinion.
Well, this is a workshop budget discussion. Whether the position is in Constable Two or the Sheriff's Office has not a lot of difference at today's point, other than if we moved him to the Sheriff's Office, then we would, I think, probably need to adjust the salary by three dollars an hour, the load and those things. And I'm not saying that's a preventative reason not to move it to the Sheriff's Office, but, Commissioner Malick, I guess I'm, out of the four Commissioners on here, one kind of four. Bringing it up to the sheriff, and three leaving it where it's at. And that's not a, we're not taking a vote.
Well, and I would like to at least bring it up for discussion well before the next budget, bring ever all parties involved with it, like I said, because we, we created the position, because there was a need for the position, but I just feel that we placed it under the wrong department to begin with.
To be clear, did you invite Constable Blake to the meeting today?
Yeah.
I did invite Constable Jarvis to visit with us last Wednesday, because I got a call from him during lunch, and I said, you're more than welcome to come and visit us. I know that was short notice, and I know that he was having health issues with his son with surgery and the injury, so it might not have fit his schedule. But I, I did offer him the opportunity to come in. But I have no idea when it's.
But you asked, you asked Commissioner Malick to speak to Constable Blake?
Did.
And that happened?
Well, I was informed that he was made aware of it before I had a chance to even talk to him about it, so I was sent to come to some of these other meetings, because the information I was going to give was the same as he received, so.
Okay. Well, this issue is for further discussion at a different time, or another time.
I guess too, some of the things on the project list.
Yes, sir.
As far as ways to fund, and I hate to talk about, you know, reducing the COA, but what kind of dollar amount do we get per percent of COA? Do you have an idea for that number?
Well, if we had, if we gave a five percent, and these are a little bit old numbers, but it'd be close, be about a hundred and thirty-four thousand if we give a five percent. If we give a four percent, it's about seventy thousand. So I think if we.
That's sixty-five thousand gain, is it?
Yeah, if you went from, if you went from, if you took it down to four from five, I think you would gain around seventy thousand. I see the auditors kind of digging through their papers, but I was just looking on that project list that we had send up.
Yes.
And the, the five percent COA was worth a hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine thirty-one, and the four percent COA was worth seventy thousand, six eighty-five. The three percent was already built in, because that was my initial thought, would be three percent, Commissioner? But then the, the auditors heard me thinking or talking or read my mind, and, and put together, well, how much more four percent would be, and then again, how much more five percent would be? Because I did share with the auditors that our, both district judges had approached me during the budget process, and I told them what we were doing on the three percent. And they said, okay, we'll go with your decision, but if you can indeed find the money, we think five percent is more appropriate than the three percent. They didn't give me a direction, they didn't give me a court order, they just made a, a comment to that effect. So based on that, and what we were looking at with new monies that had been generated, I went ahead and incorporated a five percent in my preliminary. And I thought that was appropriate, simply because National COA is about six and a quarter. So can either one of y'all say I'm in the ballpark on those numbers that I just gave, Commissioner Malick?
It's going to be more than that. Those numbers are based off the two dollar rate, plus twenty-five cents, and then plus fifty cents on the, the four percent. So we don't have an exact number on the five percent.
Okay. So Commissioner Malick, I can't answer your question at the moment.
But I guess, I mean, an open discussion for some of these, the project list, that, you know, if there was, that could be possible with a slightly lower COA, at least to discuss it. Not necessarily to say one's more important, you know, there's limit to, at least have that discussion.
We do have, that, and that's great, we can work up those numbers for you if that's what you would like. And we do have orders for the juvenile as well. When they approved the three percent, it was also approved that if the county receives more, that they will receive that same increase.
Right.
Their year ends at the end of this month, and they start in September first.
Okay.
So we'll run those numbers, we can run those numbers if we recess and come back. We can definitely run those numbers for you. But we'll do our best to run and get a really close estimate on that. But we also, keep in mind, we also have to change theirs as well, beginning September first.
How long do you think it takes to run them?
I believe it says no. It'll be ready after lunch. You said it'd be set.
What?
It's not going to be thirty minutes. I mean, it'll be probably an hour and a half or two, as long as we can dedicate it to that, just because we want to give you a good number to work with. We don't want to have to come back twenty times.
No. Well, if nothing else, we could maybe prioritize some of these on the project list, and then at least discuss and see what kind of dollars come up later.
Are you looking at the same project list that I'm looking at?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And I apologize for that. We ran different numbers multiple times, so.
Hey, y'all have done an extraordinary job with all of my requests, so no apologies necessary.
So do you want us to pull the four percent numbers?
If you do it.
Okay.
And figure, figure out what's different.
Do you want to keep the sheriff's at a three dollar, or do you want to lower that to two fifty?
No.
Okay, so four percent and three dollars.
Just to see if it's worth, you know, trying to, some of these projects, if there's any high priority type projects that we missed, that we need to include in the budget. Well, I guess, for instance, like the capital improvement projects for Fairgrounds, were those some dire needed things that we were trying to do, or it was just kind of a wish list?
I think all the major projects that wanted to get taken care of at least short term have been, most of them have been addressed. So, I mean, there's, there's definitely always work to be done around the farm, but.
If there's any of those that are higher priority, it'll be a little lower number than this, if it could be, you know, I guess. I just want to bring, open discussion, if any other Commissioners got the same thought process.
What was ever decided on the dump side improvements? Is that still on the project list, or is that back in the budget?
It's back in the budget.
Back in the budget, yeah.
It's, I just, four eighty-eight, four six one six two D A, a capital improvement line of ten thousand.
Yeah.
And the item, that dark trace, I did talk to Greg, the second, or the third item on the list, that dark trace for thirty-eight thousand, seven ninety-one, he said, he didn't see any reason why we couldn't hold off a year on that. So I had effectively excluded that from my list. And Commissioner Malick, I'm not saying we don't need to consider what's the difference between five and four. I guess the, the question is, are any of these on the project list to the level that we want to make that adjustment?
That's what I'm, what I'm discussing, you know, if anything stood out. And our generator, we're still looking at the ARPA money potentially.
Well, and that's in his budget currently, so we can mark that out.
It's currently.
I mean, yeah, we're, you mean for the hospital?
Yeah.
I mean, we've talked so many generators now that.
For the hospitals.
Uh, the hospital, yeah, we're, we're. Uh, the hospital, yeah, we're, we're gonna, it's in the budget, but-
You can take it off the project list. This is what I was getting at.
It was on that list, didn't you?
Oh, on the project list?
He, he just said on the li, on the list that we were looking at ARPA funds also.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we want to make sure that it was already in the budget, just take that thing on.
Yes, absolutely, ma'am.
We were waiting till we hired the firm and then get them to act, or present a proposal to the treasury, we would cover that.
Absolutely.
Well, I guess like the, I guess also like the light, light equipment operator, I want to make sure all our departments, you know, have their ability to do what they need to do for a light bridge as well. And our annual cleanup, because that, that, for solid waste, that didn't get put in, right, the budget?
No.
It did not?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a pretty beneficial thing to, to the county.
The strategic plan is in four two four, but that number's reduced, is it not?
Yes, that was one that you-
Yeah, and that's what, now?
It was at two, what's here, two thousand one seventeen twenty-eight?
That's what's left?
Yes, sir.
The, the remaining balance is what?
It's two thousand one hundred twenty-eight.
One seventeen?
About one seventeen.
Point twenty-eight.
There were no specific plans on that, but if we needed to do a review or stuff, of course, the town halls, I had that number in, some number in there.
Have we, have we opened up bids for the garbage?
No, sir. And that, that, Commissioner Cox, that might be an area that we're gonna have to do some adjustment because if the budget does come in, if the bids don't come in for ninety thousand or less, and we do have to take a hire, we're gonna have to determine where those extra funds are gonna come from.
Or you could rebid and see if you get anything different.
And when are we getting those bids?
The first week of September.
So we'll have, before we do the final on the fifteenth, but that's starting to push us up against the wall. Is that something we were planning on deciding on, on the first?
I think we were opening, I believe we're opening on the first week of September-
On the first week?
And then we're gonna award it-
Okay.
That next commissioner's court.
That'd be the fifteenth, but if, if it came in above the amount, then we'd probably have to have a special meeting to-
I would just say, you guys, if you guys believe a hundred thousand is a sufficient amount to a budget, if court believes that a hundred thousand is a sufficient amount to budget, then that's what you budget, and then they work within their means, kind of like the rest of all of the other departments. Otherwise, they go to rebid. If they try multiple times and they're unsuccessful, then that's when the court would probably have to-
Right, but don't, we only have ninety thousand at the, at the moment?
Currently, there's ninety thousand, yes, sir.
And we've left ten thousand on the project list in the event we needed it, but it's not in the budget?
We left, yeah, we left ten thousand just for y'all to discuss.
Right.
Or it not to be overlooked.
All right, well-
Yes, sir.
Then I guess, I, you, can you have the numbers by one o'clock?
We will do our best, yes.
All right.
Do you want four, four and a half, or just four?
I, I think four.
Okay.
The difference between five and four?
Okay.
Is that acceptable, Commissioner?
All right.
So the numbers you've given us on the project list, those are not-
Those were estimates at the time because we were running a lot of numbers, so it wasn't in actually entering it in and, um, it was just an estimate for the judge.
And then we discovered some, some shortages in different departments, like sheriff department. So that, that number was changed there too.
That number, the, wasn't a shortage, but it, well, I mean, according to Todd, when we sat down and he brought that to our attention, that they would be changing. So, yes, there have been things that, that come up during the time that will change our numbers.
Okay.
You want us to work on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If you can have time permits, kind of update the project list or let us know what's left on the project list that's not in the budget?
Yes.
At this point. All right, well, then we'll recess till one o'clock.